Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
And Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Send the mayor in. Double here. Send the mayor.
And Mayor, please.
Here I declare, core and present, please stand and join in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. I know we're a little tight here because we have the Bandit's cheerleading team, plus we have all the dogs, the police dogs here this evening. So if the council would allow us to go out of order here, I would like to call the Public Health and Safety Chairman so we can start with the police dogs. Any objections?
Nope.
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Hi, Mayor. I have, I'm just going to one right now.
Just the one.
Okay. I have, number one, the ordinance of the city of Wooddale, Page County, Illinois, authorizing the sales of a Wooddale Police Department K-9 community known as Laika. The dog is retiring. Greg, if you mind taking over for me, please.
Thanks, Alderman. Well, you can't have a good retirement party with a lot of friends, so Laika let out a cry in the parking lot and all these people showed up, so all of her friends showed up. Anyways, thanks for, I want to thank everyone for coming out to recognize the retirement of Laika from the department. Ryan is not retiring. He will be with us for many more years to come, but we want to recognize Laika for all her years of service and everything that she has brought to our agency and to the DuPage County. First person I'd like to recognize, though, if I could have Joe Coles step up here, please. As he's coming up here. Joe Coles, as everyone knows, is a former Alderman in Wooddale. And about nine years ago, we were kind of facing a little bit of a crisis after an accident, and I picked up the phone the next morning. He was on the other end of the line. And he said, hey, we're not going to deal with these setbacks. Me and my wife want to buy the new dog for the police department. So he's never sought any public recognition for it, and it was kind of a secret for quite a while to only a few people that knew. But Alderman Coles and his wife, Marlene graciously purchased Laika back in 2008 for us, kept our program going and successful. So, Joe, thank you for your tireless partnership.
All I've got to say is that the dog did a good job, and so did Ryan, and I...
Chief, chief, could you have him?
We did, we decided that we wanted to make sure Ryan, anybody that lost a dog knows how it feels. And we didn't want him to feel bad, so we went out and we bought the dog, and we gave it to the city. We actually bought the dog. We went, we took, we got it right directly from the owner, and we bought the dog. And that's all I can say. We tried to keep it quiet, but it always comes out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Having a K-9 unit, it's a substantial investment, but something that we think comes back to pay us back multiple times over. And, you know, it takes a good dog to have a good K-9 program, but I believe it takes just as much a good handler. Ryan O'Neal, for the last eight years, has put in countless energy into this position. You know, he never just got the dog and it was trained, and he's tirelessly working, tirelessly training with the dog on a daily basis, and he really has taken our program to a completely new level. We ran some numbers as far as the number of cases Laika was involved in. And in the hundreds of cases she's been involved in, her, the seizures that she's been involved in, the street value of the narcotics was over $3 million. Not just in Wooddale, but in DuPage County. And also, as far as drug currency that was seized, almost $400,000 in drug money that was seized over her career. So that's a testament to the dog and to the handler. And also, you know, the group that's here that Ryan trains with, and they're going to make a short presentation in just a minute, but it's constant work. It's nonstop work, not even when he's here, but when he's at home. So, Ryan, for your dedication, thanks for all that. You've taken us to a completely new level, and you've built a ton of respect for our department and a K-9 program in the area. So, nice job. We appreciate it. This time, I'd like to have Mark Piccoli come on up here. He's the Director of DUMAG, which is the DuPage County Metropolitan Enforcement Group. He'd like to make a presentation to Ryan and Laika.
Thank you, Chief. So, as Chief Vesta was saying, the dog, besides all the great accolades, everything that Laika's done here in Wooddale, she, Ryan, and she have helped out tremendously throughout the county. And in particular, they've helped out, helped DUMAG out. We are the Drug Task Force of DuPage County. And they've been great partners with, for DUMAG over the last several years, with many of those seizures, many of those arrests, and some of that currency seized. And some of those funds, it sounds like a lot of money, but when it's all said and done, it often doesn't shake out to be that much money. But a lot of that money gets turned back in to help units like ours and Wooddale sustain other programs. So we take the money from the bad guys and kind of turn it around and help the good guys out. So, and you may or may not know this, but Ryan was an undercover agent at DUMAG for a little over three years, just prior to his assignment with K-9 unit. So he did a phenomenal job when he was at DUMAG back 2004 through '07, I think it was. So, before my time, but I've heard a lot of good things about him. So I know there's other people here that have worked with him as well back in DUMAG. So, on behalf of DUMAG, I'd like to present Ryan and Laika in, with a plaque that states, "In appreciation of your many years of assistance provided to the DuPage Metropolitan Enforcement Group," with today's date. And like I said, the service provided has been, you know, immeasurable. Every time we'd ask, they were always available, help out, and always did a phenomenal job. So, thank you both very much.
Next, I'd like to have Steve List come up. We're a member of the FIAAT. It's an investigative task force. There's a K-9 response group. And, you know, we rely on them to help us when we have big incidents, but they also rely on us being part of that team when that happens. So he'd like to make a short presentation.
Thank you. My name is Steve List, and I'm a commander for FIAAT K-9 Response. Basically what that is, it's multi-jurisdictional K-9 unit within DuPage County. So basically, whenever another town that's a member of FIAAT calls and they have a K-9, they need a K-9 response for something that's high-risk, maybe an armed robbery, or, you know, assist on a track, or some to that effect, they'll call us, and we put out a page, and the dogs come. So Ryan's been a member of the team since 2008, and the whole time, he's been a great asset. Thank you.
And last but not least, I'd like to have Anthony Polley come up from Elmhurst Police. As I mentioned, the ongoing training, these guys are all high-energy guys with high-energy dogs. And I know they rely on each other a lot to get better at what they do, so he'd like to make a short presentation.
Good evening. I'm representing, actually, all of our officers here. Mainly the South Central Police K-9 Training Group, which Ryan's been involved with for quite some time now. Ryan has been a tremendous help in our K-9 group. He's always there. He's hard-working. He's always trying to impress us, do different things, and he's invaluable. And Evan, you're going to have a heck of a guy to follow here, a good mentor. You know, if you've got any troubles, go see Ryan, because this guy knows his stuff about dogs. As you can see with Laika, she's a superstar. And as far as our plaque, it's our retirement report presented to K-9 Laika, K-9 handler, Corporal Ryan O'Neal. In grateful recognition of the Wooddale Police K-9 Laika, who faithfully served the Wooddale Police Department and the citizens of Wooddale for seven years with his handler, Corporal Ryan O'Neal, from 2008 to 2015. Your exemplary service and dedication to the Police K-9 will be truly missed. Members of the South Central Police K-9 Training Group, dated December 17, 2015.
Thank you, sir. So, lastly, before I, before I let Ryan say a few words down in our department, you know, remembering our history and where we come from is very important to us. So we're going to, we have a plaque that'll be put on the wall next to our other service dogs that we've had, to recognize Ryan's service and Laika's service to the agency. So Ryan, again, great job with her. Don't know what I'm going to do without seeing you with her next to your side, walking through the station, but I know you're going to move on to bigger and better things, and you set a great example. We're glad our new dog is here with us tonight, and, you know, we just continued success, and nice job. We appreciate it.
I had to write this down a little bit so I don't forget anybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to this very special occasion. As those K-9 handlers know, it's a very bittersweet one, it is. Can't believe the journey is over. It feels like it was yesterday when K-9 Laika and I became a team. The opportunity to handle a police dog is one very special one. The experience is truly one that only handlers could fully understand. Laika's been an unbelievable partner and could not ask for a better one. At this time, I would like to thank the City Council for their support of the Wooddale K-9 program. Without you folks, we would not be standing here today. I'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Coles for the purchase of K-9 Laika. Without the purchase of K-9 Laika, she would not be here today. I'd like to thank all the members of the Wooddale Police Department for your continuous support from the beginning of our career to the end of the career. I'd like to thank Dr. Newman and Dr. Brandies, with Partners in Paws, for providing superior medical care for Laika over her term as our K-9. I'd like to thank all the current and past K-9 handlers that I have trained with, making Laika and I such a complete team. And I want to thank all the agencies that called on us during our term, and thank them for us to be able to have the chance to assist them. I'd like to thank Wilson Pet Supply and also Pet Supplies Plus, Mr. Lennon, for providing the food for K-9 Laika during his time. And last of all, I'd like to give a special thanks to my family for being there and tolerating me coming home at four o'clock in the morning and dealing with the ups and downs of the position. Without that support at home, there again, we could not be the K-9 team that we are today. I conclude with this poem that us K-9 handlers know. My eyes are your eyes to watch and protect you and yours. My ears are your ears to hear and detect evil minds in the dark. My nose is your nose to scent the invader of your domain, and so may live. My life is also yours. Again, I thank you. It has been an absolute honor, privilege, to serve as the Wooddale Police K-9 Officer. Thank you.
So lastly, in order to officially retire K-9 Laika, there has to be a purchase agreement to end our relationship with her as far as, you know, being a department and officially working dog. So that's what the ordinance is before you have before you. Finance Director, Alderman Eugene Wesley already fronted the $10 for the purchase agreement, so we appreciate that. And we need to have a motion to approve the sale of Laika to Ryan, where she'll retire with Ryan's family.
Second.
So much for that.
We have a motion in a second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? That passes. Thank you. Chief, do you want to take a picture of all the officers with the dogs?
Think we can do it? Sure, you can get them all in? All right, sure.
Meanwhile, while you're getting them set, I want, I'm sorry, I want to thank all the surrounding towns that brought their K-9 dogs out here. It was really nice that, the support that Laika got from everyone here is very outstanding. So I want to say thank you to all the other departments that came out. So, thank you very much.
Chief, can we sit them up over here in front of the dais?
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Lady? Hi, young lady. Good job.
I like, enjoy retirement. That's a, that's a sign.
Was that Roy?
Roy.
He's got bacon from Florida.
You think there was all real grass he was hauling?
Land skier, for sure.
All right, we'll go back to the beginning of the meeting. I need a motion to approve the City Council minutes of December 3rd.
So move.
Should I vote, Mr. Mayor?
You have a correction?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
On the, let's see, that Stormwater, were there all ayes? There were two nays, but it doesn't appear here.
Which section?
Bear with me, just had it.
Page five.
Page five.
Number two. In the back.
Got it, yeah.
And the two nays?
I believe there were Sorrentino and Catalano were nays.
Okay. Any other corrections? All right, you have that, Amanda? Okay, anything further?
Should I do my?
When it comes up. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda?
Yes. Please state your name for the clerk and deputy clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. I'd like to file a complaint or address a complaint.
For the record, you have to give us the name and address.
My name is Dave Hastrock, a member of, I'm a resident of Wooddale. My complaint is, who is the engineer that tore up all this intersection here of Wooddale Road and Irving Park? Who's the planner who did this?
Mr. Murmurs?
IDOT is in charge of that project and does all the construction sequencing.
Where is IDOT here today?
Illinois Department of Transportation does not attend the council meetings.
Have they seen this?
They're in charge of the project. Region one, IDOT.
Well, this, the way they're doing this, I hear nothing but complaints, okay, from a lot of people. People sitting in traffic, businesses, okay? I sit there with my radar gun, and I'm clocking on commercial between 83 and Wooddale Road. Cars doing 45 and 50 miles an hour. And this isn't the only one. They're going down Montrose and Windsor and other places. They're trying to avoid this. And this isn't only, this is the worst of it, okay, here. But nobody wants to come to Wooddale anymore. You got this all screwed up over here. Then you got Thorndale and Wooddale Road screwed up. How much, why don't we just shut the whole town down, okay, until all this is over? We're losing commerce here. Businesses are complaining that they're losing business because of this? This was very poor planning on the part of the state. I'd like to see the engineer or the people that are in charge of this and tell them just what I think face-to-face. This is a horrible thing. There are times where you can't even get north or south on Wooddale Road during the daytime. What do you do if there's an emergency situation? The schools have trouble getting buses through here. Bus drivers are complaining. What is the city going to do about this? Or can the city do anything about this? They tore up so much stuff, and now it's going to sit like this all winter long? Thank God, we have not had a major snowstorm. And what's going to happen when that happens? I've watched IDOT try to clear the streets when they were, before they got tore up. I can just about imagine what this is going to be when we have a bad snowstorm. Like I said, you might as well just close the doors of Wooddale. We're all going to just have to sit here until springtime. I wish somebody would have had a more of better planning of this.
Mr. Murmurs?
Yes, our Public Works Director is behind you. He can get your name and number, and then we could have a little meeting with IDOT. You could talk to the individual in charge of the traffic sequencing and get in touch with him.
Thank you.
Do any other citizens wish to address the council? Mr. Siz, Alderman Sizmarsky, I'm sorry.
City Manager Murmurs, if you can give him the, he's complaining about Thorndale. I'll see if you can give him the number to Illinois Toll Road and IDOT.
Go ahead, Mr. Murmurs.
Matt, can you also maybe set up some Tollway representative meeting? Because that's the Thorndale project.
Any other residents care to address the council? I have no written communication this evening. Under Mayor's report, do have one item. Bensonville, Wooddale Bandits. I have a letter here from Diane Stazel, if I said that correctly? Again, this letter was given to us just before Thanksgiving, and unfortunately, we could not get it on the agenda until now. So I'm sure the, they went the week of December 6th to national level. Ms. Stazel, are you going to speak for the Bandits?
I will.
Okay. Hold on one second. The letter, if everybody read the letter, it's requesting a donation for their expenses.
I'll make the motion to donate $500 to the band.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call in there, please?
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley. And Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
Thank you very much. So I'm Diana Stazel. I'm with the Bensonville, Wooddale Football and Cheer Association. We are a nonprofit youth sports program, and we were invited last year. We had a very successful year where we made it all the way to Nationals and placed fifth nationally. And this year, we are doing just as well. In addition, we have another team that qualified. So we have two of our teams in cheerleading that took it all the way to Florida. And as you know, travel expenses are very expensive for these girls. And we appreciate any help that Wooddale has given us. We've done tag days in Wooddale where we were able to raise money for the families to travel. Many businesses that contribute checks as well, and we're very grateful for that, and our girls are. So our coaches work very hard. We are all volunteers that make this organization go strong. We are made up of 10 currently board members and about 12 coaches altogether, and 47 cheerleaders. And when we compete, it's definitely hard on everybody, a lot of volunteer hours. So I'd like to introduce some of our coaches and our girls. This is Sanelle. She's our head coach on the junior Pee-wee team. Jamie is our head coach on the junior midget team. Tina Cook, she's not here. She is also an assistant coach on the junior Pee-wee team. Daria, Tiana Salzenger, and Nina Mercado along on the junior midgets. We have Sonia, Brandy's mom, where's Shayna? Shayna was there, and our team mom, Michelle Clark. From what I understand, Wooddale's schools have their choir concert tonight, so more than half of our coaches and girls are not here tonight to join us. To introduce our junior Pee-wee team, we have Faith Atkins, Ava A., Angela Bajo, Valeria Bonuelos, Emily De Lamora, Jessica De Simone, Fiorella Jimenez, Giselle Gonzalez, Alexa Hernandez, Julia Yarchik, Lauren Cook, Kayden Lewis, Jada Mabry, Rosa Lee, Amelia Portman, Nicole Stazel, Natalia Stazel, Jessica Van Lewen, Gianna Vargas, and Ava Vitellio. Sorry if I'm not pronouncing your last names right. Our junior midget team is Genevieve Arroyo, Nora Clark, Trista Greco, Abigail Horvath, Claudia Lukaszczyk, Leslie Contreras, Emily Diaz, Marlee Howson, Brandy Willens, Anamaya Navarro. And on behalf of all of us, we thank you for your help and your support.
Thank you, and great job, girls. And we get the girls to give us a little cheer, something simple. I know there's not a lot of room there. Maybe they can give us a quick cheer.
You guys want to do it separate? If you guys want to do your bring it in and do your group cheer?
Hey, you'll be able to watch it on TV. You can move, you can move up a little bit.
Yes.
Is it good for the camera?
Vegas Junior Pee-wee, we're on fire! One, two, three. We are, we are, junior midget cheer! Go, Vegas!
Thank you, girls. Great job.
Thank you. Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Hey, good luck and congrats.
Thanks for working with the kids. Come here, you state champs. Take hands with us. Congratulations.
Don't give up that trophy.
Duh, look at you, switched teams and all. Congrats, congrats.
Thank you, congrats.
Love it. Congratulations, young lady.
Here, I'll give you iPhone.
Keep doing it. What's it doing?
Congrats. Hey, thank you for your.
Thank you, thank you for the support.
Oh, fist bump, alright. How you doing? Hey, good, good.
Congrats, keep up the good work.
Hey, good luck. iPhone? Good luck. Congrats.
Alright, alright. My goodness. And then there was the few.
Okay, we have one other item I'd like to say. On behalf of the entire city council and the entire city staff, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and Happy Holidays. Everybody stay safe and enjoy the holidays. And that'll conclude my report. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three items. First, I know there's a continuing interest in the Bright Oaks development. Representatives of Bright Oaks will be at the January 7th council meeting. They'll have a brief presentation and then you can ask some questions. I believe their, their presentation will be multimedia. They'll have some pictures and some updates for you. Second item, January 28th, Chief Vesta was able to arrange a tour for the council members. 6:00 PM at the Addison Dispatch Center, for those of you that are interested. January 28th at 6:00 PM and that tour will be about an hour and then you can head on over to, I believe we have a city committee meeting that night as well. Last item, Bussy Woods Project, which is headed up by Elk Grove, which we, we did participate in some of the, I think, initial costs for a few thousand dollars, but none of the construction costs, more planning costs. That project is pretty much complete. There's some small things still to be finalized. Believe it or not, one of the things that has to be finalized is they're trying to get their SCADA system to work. That's one of their last things. I know we talked about that a little last week, so they're having some trouble with SCADA 2, I guess. They hope to be operational after the first of the year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have six items on the consent, consent agenda. No objections? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second. There was no objections? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley. Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
And Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Baxter and Woodman CSI for the water SCADA upgrades in a not to exceed amount of Item number two, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Baxter and Woodman CSI for the wastewater SCADA upgrades in the not to exceed amount of $223,065. Item number three, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for Ward 2 and 3 stormwater issues in the not to exceed amount of $88,850. Item number four, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Lane Christiansen Company for the abandonment of well number two in an amount not to exceed Item number five, an ordinance declaring property owned by the City of Wooddale surplus for the purpose of selling. Item number six, approval of the final payment request to ALAM Concrete Contractors for the Hemlock Sidewalk Project in an amount not to exceed $37,533.90. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, Alderman Smarsky. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports planning and zoning.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, we do have one other item. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion to ordinance amending of Chapter 5 of municipal code for the City of Wooddale regarding liquor control. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Sorrentino, yes.
Regarding the amending Chapter 5, a while back, I made a motion to amend the payment system and I was supported by all the councilmen and at the time, I truly appreciated it. Since then, I've done some due diligence, talked to some drinking establishment owners and found that they've all been paying with personal and/or business checks with no problems. We had one incident where someone wrote an insufficient check. So I think I was a little premature and will admit, making a mistake, making that motion where all liquor licenses needed to be paid with certified funds. I've come to realize that there's a cost factor to the certified funds, $10, and certainly it's an inconvenience. So I would like to rescind that original motion for Chapter 5 of our municipal code regarding our liquor control to.
You need to make a motion to make a change. You can make a motion to change.
So I'm making a motion to change my original.
Oh, that's right, because we made the motion already.
What?
What, can we make an amendment to the motion? Want to make an amendment to the motion? Let's make an amendment.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
I, I agree, Mayor.
You're the, you're the made the motion, yes.
I approve, I, I'm.
You agree? Okay, you concur.
With the change.
And Alderman Jacob, you were second.
Yeah, I concur.
You concur? Okay. Any other questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky. And Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Woods.
I have two reports, Mayor.
Yes.
First, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and RJN Group Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Design and Construction Observation in a not to exceed amount of $59,485. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
And Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, approval of a partial payment request number 24 to Williams Brothers Construction, Inc. for North Water, wastewater treatment plant project in an amount not to exceed $105,806. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, is that the amount that we pay him after liquidated damages taken out?
Mr. Murmurs?
Correct, yeah, we had noted in the memo, there's an itemized line item for the deduction of the liquidated damages. I don't recall the amount, but it is itemized in the memo.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
And Alderman Woods.
Yes. That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Administration?
Mayor, I have one item which will be deferred until after executive session.
Alright, thank you. Under other business, under the airport noise report, anything? Alderman Jacob?
No report on that.
Thank you. Under stormwater commission report?
We had the stormwater meeting yesterday and I know Mr. York and Jeff are already working on it, but they had requested that an extra pallet of sandbags go somewhere by center and growth as well as on our monthly, and this is actually an attorney question, on our monthly retention basin report, there's been a couple that have needed attention for several times now and they want to know if we could notify, notify those people. They are private, they are privately owned.
Mr. Cage, that's going to be under your department, I take it? Maybe, I see Mr. York. Go ahead.
We've talked to the Community Development Department about that and they're going to research what can be done and maybe try to talk to the, the owners about maintaining that property correctly.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Approval of list of bills, December 17th. Alderman Jacob?
I make a motion to approve the list of bills for December 17th, 2015, for $803,152.4. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Alderman Messina, you have your hand up. Question on the bills?
Yeah, question on check sequence 25 for Dave and Jim's Autobody?
Do we know whose that is? Is that, is that Public Works or, okay. Mr. York?
There was a charge for $654.72 for repair damage on a truck. Could you elaborate on that?
Go ahead, Mr. York, who said?
Yeah, truck 504 was involved in some sort of small brush-up incident that affected the rear quarter panel and it needed to be repaired.
Go ahead, follow.
Was it an accident or with another vehicle or just an object?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
That is a good question. We did our due diligence, we did research into who had that accident or damage done. We've got very conflicting reports between different individuals, so we're kind of at a quandary of what actually did happen. It was minor damage. Truck is a newer truck, so that's why we decided to get it repaired.
You have a follow?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Wright Wesley?
I'd like to see a copy of that, though.
Okay, Mr. Wilson. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
And Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. We do need an executive session this evening for discussion on collective bargaining. I need a motion to recess into executive session.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? We're recessed.